Margaret Butler and I'm a physiotherapist and Pilates instructor. We're going to do a mat work session today with a little bit of an introduction to the small Pilates ball. So if you've got one of these, they're ideal. You want a nine centimetre diameter ball and you have it a little bit squishy, so don't inflate it completely. However, if you don't have one, you can adapt a small, this is a small football that's slightly deflated. So anything that's a similar size will do the job. And just for a bit of fun, I've got a novelty Batman cushion. It's really just something that you can pop between your legs that's going to keep your knees hip width apart. Okay, so it'll become more clear as we go through the class. So as I say, not essential, but just something that I'm going to use. So we're going to start on the mat, keep the ball beside you if you have one. We're just going to come into the rest position as we normally would do. So on our backs and we're going to have a moment just to scan our body. Check that our posture is as good as it can be to start and just become more aware. So our head is nice and relaxed. You want to have a bit of support, I've just got a couple of folded up towels. Very importantly, you want to feel that your shoulders are nice and relaxed. So have that image of the collarbones melting. Be aware of where your shoulder blades are. Let those ribs be soft, make sure they're not sticking up away from you. Make sure your hips are directly underneath your shoulders. You're going to have that little gap underneath your back, so try and make sure your pelvis is in neutral. And you should feel comfortable of course. And then your hips, your knees and your feet want to be in that nice parallel line. If you struggle with that in terms of where your feet are, then something like a small yoga block, box of tissues, hardback book, that will help and that will work just as well and help guide your position. So hopefully we're fairly relaxed to start, we're going to take a breath in. And as we breathe out, just allow a simple movement, just that very slow slide of the leg without anything else changing. Breathing in and on the out breath, just slowly sliding back up again. Breathing in on the out breath, letting the other leg slide away. Breathing in and sliding back up again. Just going to repeat that a few more times each side, so really nice, simple exercise. One leg stretch, level one with ball lifts. It's just a tuning in exercise really. Trying to make sure we can keep that parallel line of the legs, keep that distance between the feet. Try and keep our pelvis absolutely stable and watch out as always for that tension creeping into the shoulders. I will keep reminding you of that because that's something that I struggle with, so nice and relaxed. Just one more time each side. And then let's come back to that neutral position. Always check your posture, just scan your body briefly, make any adjustments you need to. Breathe in and on the out breath this time, let's just float one leg to tabletop, hopefully effortlessly. Lower the foot with control, breathe in and on the out breath, float that other leg. We're just repeating that as we did with the previous exercise, alternating. Softly, gently making it feel like it's no effort at all. Imagining that we're moonwalking. Nice and relaxed in our shoulders and feel free to go at your own pace. Work with your own breath. But remember the essentials of keeping that pelvis nice and controlled and the upper body nice and relaxed. Let's just do that one more time each side. And then come back to neutral. Pause for a moment, check our posture again. Make sure the feet haven't crept too close together. Breathe in and this time we're going to let one knee go to the side, so hip twist level one. And then slowly come back up to the centre. Breathing in the middle as we breathe out, letting that other leg drift. And this is where it's really important that we don't let our hips roll. It's very easy to start tipping the pelvis. It's quite difficult to really recognise that, so if you've just done the warm up I did, remember what I said about those subtle changes in where your weight is. Try and become better at recognising that, one more time each side. Come back up to neutral. And then let's just draw our knees in, loosen off for a moment, just hug and release. Mobilise the bottom of that spine and have a moment to just assess how our back is feeling. So before we do too much in the class, it's always sensible to just check how we're feeling at any given time. Let's try a little sideways movement, so a little wiggle of the hips. And then let's just do a slow circle of the knees in one direction. So hopefully if you're lying on something comfortable, that should be like quite a nice massage and then let's circle in the other direction. And then this is a little bit different, if you draw your knees in and then take them apart, so you're circling your hips this time. It might not be quite so obvious, but draw in and then take your knees in a circle going away from each other. So circular motion of the hip joint. And then let's reverse that, so going out first, drawing together, pushing away, drawing together one more time. And then let's just lift the head and curl into a tight ball, stretch for a moment. And if that doesn't feel enough, take your legs a little bit further over so that you feel that lift of the tailbone. And let's lower our legs, give them a little shake. Reach our arms above us, point our toes away, have a good old stretch, allow the ribs to lift up. And then push through the heels, stretch out those toes, circle the ankles one way and circle the other way. Bringing the arms around, sliding the legs back in, so back to the rest position. So at this point, if you have a ball or indeed any similar object, just place it on your tummy lightly. Check your feet are in that good position again, hip width apart. And we're going to introduce some work for our upper abdominals. So this is preparing us for double tabletop. We're going to breathe in, as we breathe out, we're going to roll the ball up towards the knees. Hold it there for a moment, feel that work in the abdominals. Lower down, feel that relaxation of the shoulders and neck. Breathe in, this time we're going to reach up to the ceiling with the ball. We're going to hold the arm straight and then read the ball a little bit higher, feel those shoulder blades glide. Let the shoulder blades nestle back down into the floor. Breathe in, as you breathe out, take the ball over your head, feel that stretching of the shoulders. Now, it's important at this point to try not to let your ribs lift up, so you're using your muscles at the front of your body. Your oblique abdominals in fact. And then we're going to lift the ball up to the ceiling again and lower it back down onto the tummy. Relax for a moment, we're going to repeat that. Breathe in, as we breathe out, we're going to roll the ball up towards the knees. Hold that position. Lower back down, relax the shoulders and the neck. Breathe in on the out breath, let's reach up to the ceiling again. Reach a little bit higher. Let the shoulder blades come back down. Keep those ribs into the floor as we take the ball over the head. Feel that stretch in the shoulders, but keep the tummy in and the ribs down. Reach up to the ceiling again and rest back down with the ball on your tummy. Let's just do that once more, breathing in on the out breath, rolling up towards the knees. Coming back down, reaching up to the ceiling, reaching a little higher. Back down again. Breathe in on the out breath, over the head, ribs glued down. Stretching the shoulders without forcing anything, back up to the ceiling and back onto the tummy. So just before we finish with the ball, at this point, we're going to roll up once more and then place the ball, more indeed cushion, between your knees. So you're just holding it, not really squeezing it too much, but just making sure it doesn't drop. We're going to do some work in a bridge position now. So before we do the full bridge, we'll do our pelvic tilt, hands on our hips for this. We're going to breathe in and allow that gap and that arch underneath the back. As we breathe out then, we're going to flatten that back, push into the floor and our pelvis tips the other way. We're rocking forwards and backwards. If I exaggerate, we're going to breathe in and tip the pelvis one way. Allow the tummy to lift up, breathe out and rock back the other way. So the tailbone is lifted. Let's do that a few more times. Breathing in, arching the back, breathing out, rocking backwards, breathing in again. And each time we breathe out, we're thinking of a little bit of a squeeze on the glutes to help prepare us for the bridge. And if we keep doing that little squeeze of the glutes, hopefully we'll be less likely to get cramp in our hamstrings. Fingers crossed. So arms by our sides now, shoulders nice and relaxed. We're going to breathe in, allow that back to arch again. As we breathe out, we're going to flatten the back, squeeze the bottom and this time lift the tailbone. And then keep rolling, squeeze the ball ever so slightly, just to work those inner thighs a little. Breathing up the top. As you breathe out, roll down and make sure you lower the top of your spine first. So keep those hips away from the floor for as long as you can. Little squeeze on the ball and lower down. Let's breathe in again, as we breathe out, flatten the back, tip the pelvis the other way, squeeze the bottom, little squeeze on the ball. So tightening those thighs, feet are nice and firm into the floor, breathing in at the top. As we breathe out, we're going to lower down slowly. And return that tailbone to the floor. Let's just do that a few more times. Breathing in as we arch the back, breathing out as we flatten, little squeeze on the ball. And whilst we're doing this, I'll just let you know, this is a really good way of working with the bridge. If you're someone whose knees tend to drift apart when you're doing the bridge, or if you often get told that in class, this is really the ideal way for you. It helps to really fire up your glutes as well, as well as your thigh of course. And it just gives you something to focus on. Breathing at the top, lowering down. And then let's lift the knees, take the ball out of the way. And you might just want another quick kneecap at this point. And let's have a little leg shake as well. So before we go on with our double tabletop work, I think we'll just have a moment to change things a bit and do our hip stretches. Keeping it nice and simple, we're going to start with the usual one, foot on the knee. The other knee gently going out to the side. If you want to apply a little bit of pressure with that hand, but just go cautiously, especially if you haven't done much lately. So just explore how that hip is feeling. And if that feels okay, then we're going to lift our head, take hold of the thigh that's on the floor. Clasp our hands and draw that knee towards us. If you want to, straighten that knee to the ceiling, lower the toes and stretch out the hamstring as well. We're going to lower that foot to the floor, keep the other foot where it is. We're going to breathe in and as we breathe out, slide that foot along the floor. And as we do that, this knee is hopefully going to open out. Obviously it depends, sorry, on the flexibility of hip joint, don't force anything. Gravity will bring you down to the floor, but it shouldn't be painful, so if that's uncomfortable, don't feel that you have to stay there. If you feel okay, then what we'll do is take our hands over our heads, stretch up. Point our toe away, effectively it's like we're doing tree pose from yoga, but we're lying down, so it's a whole lot easier than trying to balance. When we've stretched there for a moment, let's take our arms out to the side and really relax our shoulders. So we're trying to get that feeling of the pelvic girdle as well as the shoulder girdle just opening out into the floor. Let's give our legs a little shake. And then come back up to the rest position. Same stretches on the other side, so foot onto the knee first, gently pushing that knee away from you. As always, watch that this hip doesn't ride up. Take hold of the thigh if you're comfortable with that, draw it towards you, recognise that that is a strong stretch, so go cautiously. And as always, observe if one side feels tighter than the other. You know, that means you need to practise it a little bit more. Straighten the foot if you want, or the leg I should say, bring your toes down, feel that stretch in the hamstrings. And then lower that foot to the floor. As we did on the other side, we're going to slide that leg along, open that knee out to the side. Try to allow that hip to stretch and then reach the arms above us, lengthen, perhaps point the toe away. Make the body as tall as you can and then open the arms to the side and just let everything flop. Give the legs a shake again and come back up to neutral. Just a little bit of work in double tabletop, just to make sure that we haven't forgotten how to do it and that we're making the most of that upper abdominal work we did before. So floating one leg to tabletop, breathing in, on the out breath, engaging both the upper and lower abdominals, pausing. Floating the first leg down, floating the second leg down. Floating with the other leg this time, pausing there on the out breath, floating that second leg. First leg down, second leg down. So that's a little bit of preparation, hopefully that felt fine. If that felt okay, we'll float one leg, then the second leg. Pause, breathe in and on the out breath, we're going to tap down and come back up. Tap down and come back up. We're going to keep alternating, one leg and then the other. We're trying to sustain that same contraction in the abdominals, but without feeling like we're tensing our neck and shoulders. And without that feeling of creeping tension in the lower back. So if it is starting to tighten up and get tired, lower the legs, give them a little shake. And let's just draw the knees in and loosen off for a moment. So let's just repeat that once more. This is about building strength and stamina, I aim it to feel that we can progress to doing a few more repetitions. But as always, it's quality over quantity. I'd rather you do a few and do them well. To stay mentally focused is absolutely crucial all the way through this. We want to really focus on what we're feeling in our bodies the whole way through the class. And then lower down, give the legs a shake. Draw the knees in again. So if you do feel like your back's a bit tight after that, you might want to do that stronger stretch that we did before, where we lift the knees a little bit closer to the legs further over, I should say. And then only if you're okay with this, then if you take your legs apart, flatten your back so your tailbone comes into the floor. Open your legs a bit wider, knees are coming down towards the armpit, it's not very elegant. Happy baby, it's called, but if you can manage that, it's a really great stretch. From there, let's bring our feet together, hold the ankles or shins. If you want to use your elbows to push a little bit more and stretch your inner thigh, and you might just want a little roll side to side. And then let's take our knees apart, hold the knees and just do our little inset on its back impression. And in contrast then curl into a tight ball again, tense everything as much as we can. And then lower the head, the tailbone, let the arms flop and for a moment let everything flop. Draw those legs back up. So for this next one, it's our spinal rotation, you can either keep your feet on the floor, which is a little bit easier, or lift your knees, which I'm going to do. Glue those shoulder blades down, keep those ribs fixed down. We're going to breathe in and on the out breath, slowly take the knees one way and take the head the other way. Pause for a moment there, don't let the shoulder blade lift, breathe in and as you breathe out, come back up. Repeat that on the other side. A little tip is if you feel that your knees are drifting apart, place the ball between them again, or any other small object, cushion, pillow. And that will just help to give you that sense of keeping the legs together. So once more each side. Head turning the opposite way, nice and controlled. And we're going to gently rock side to side and roll over to face the front. If you're using the ball, bring it with you. Make sure you've got that support for your head again, it's even more important when we're lying on our side. So we're going to do arm openings, you don't need to use the ball for this. And if you want to, you can do the more familiar one, hats where you just open up and out. But a little alternative, if you want to hold a ball, we're just going to do that circular motion going up and over the top. And if you're doing this one, you'll find that you won't go quite all the way to horizontal. You actually get a better stretch if you stop at about two o'clock. Coming back over onto your side. And again, swooping over the top of your head, almost doing full semi-circle, stretching for a moment and back again. Let's just do that once more, up and over. Hold it there for a few more breaths, just allowing the body to relax into that stretch. And then come back onto your side. Okay, so once again, if you're using the ball at this point, if you roll it down towards your feet, going to come into position for clam. This isn't official, but I call this clam level one and a half, because it is sort of halfway between the two. So we're resting our feet on top of the ball. These balls are ideal because they're a little bit wobbly, so that challenges us more. Now, what's key with this, that we don't let our ribs sink down. So we're still trying to draw in the tummy, lift the ribs. And then once we're in a good position, we're lifting that top knee nice and slow and controlled. Try not to let the hip rock backwards. And watch out as always as well for any tension creeping into that shoulder. And just do a couple more. And then just allow that leg to rest for a moment, let it flop on the floor, let your ribs sink down. Okay, this bit could be tricky if the ball wants to roll away, so we're trying to take the ball between our feet now. Might need a little adjustment. And from that position then, same thing, but with the ribs lifted again. So we're going to start off with the feet on the floor, lifting our knee into that clam movement. And then when you've done a couple like that, see if you can just hover the ball. So back to level two, where it should feel a little bit more challenging because you're still trying to hold off the ball. So it's really working the hip a bit more dynamically in terms of stability, really good one. But not an easy one. We won't do too many because we're going to go from there straight into our stretched out position. Try and keep the ball between your feet. So this is a really good way of helping your alignment and making sure that you really fire up those glutes. So from here, we're going to float the arm and take it over our head. Imagine that we've got a ball between our hands as well. Draw our tummy in and keep our ribs lifted. Then let's see if we can float the arm down and back without wobbling too much. Keep the tummy drawn in, this is a really brilliant way of making your core work automatically. Bring the fingertips to the floor for a second. We're going to breathe in and as we breathe out, we're going to lift the ball, squeezing on it slightly. So this requires a lot more drawing in around the tummy and the ribs. And then we're going to lower down and rest. Try not to let those ribs sink into the floor as you lift your legs. Breathe in, on the out breath, draw in the tummy, squeeze the legs together slightly, hover that ball without the ribs sinking. That might be enough for you, but if you think you can progress, try it with your arm by his side. So more difficult not to wobble. And lower down, and then only if you're feeling quite brave, do it with your arm over your head, so floating the feet again. Lower down. And then we're just going to roll the ball up towards us, let our legs rest on the floor. Have a moment just to relax and perhaps give the ankles a quick wiggle. Okay, so before we come up from this position, if you want to just reach your arm behind you, leave that leg hanging. You'll find that you'll get a nice stretch across the side of your hip there, just like gravity do the work. And then come over onto your side. We're not going to do side plank at this point, we're going to skip that out today. But I'm going to show you another exercise in this side sitting position. So if you don't want to use the ball, I've got one leg behind here, I don't know if you can quite see that in a sort of hurdle position. The simpler version of this is just to slide down onto your elbow, reach that arm up and over and then just do a little side bend. So we're aiming to get a bit of a stretch into these muscles here that we've just been working. And that would be a static stretch, holding it like that. One nice way of progressing this is if you then twist your body slightly, reach out as if you're trying to take a cup of tea or something nice that someone's just handed to you. And then come back up again. So that's the easier version, that's the static stretch. Slightly more tricky, but a really good way of working your shoulder more dynamically. If you take hold of your ball, you must be careful with this one, so if you've got any issues with your shoulder or neck and you're not sure, don't do it. So the hand is resting lightly on it, we breathe in and as we breathe out, we're going to roll away. Now look at my elbow, I'm coming to that nearly ninety degree position. My elbow isn't touching the floor, I'm just resting on the ball and then I'm coming back up. So don't make the mistake that a lot of people do and go too far away. That's not what we're after, okay? We're going to roll away again, controlling that movement, so we're just hovering above the floor with the elbow, coming back up. If possible, we're going to introduce the other arm as well. And stretch at the same time, rolling back up. It's a really nice way of working that control of the movement at the side of the spine. As we roll down, but also as we roll back up. Lovely. And before we swap sides, we're going to stretch that leg out. And just do our hamstring stretch. You don't need the ball for this, but it's quite a nice way to use it. We're going to breathe in, as we breathe out, reach down towards the foot. And just roll the ball as far away as we can without straining anything. Holding that position a moment longer and then roll back up again. Breathe in, this time let's roll the ball down towards the middle. We'll feel a slightly different stretch, more in the inner thigh. Come back up again. Going to give our legs a shake. And then arrange your cushion again. Bring the ball into the best place for you and we're going to do the same on the other side. So starting with arm openings. I'm going to use the ball again like I did last time, legs are relaxed, we're taking it over the top. Coming to about a two o'clock position. And coming back up and over. So over the top. You want to think of rainbow. Lot of those around lately. Let's just do one more, but this time hold that stretch. Try and relax into it. Let go a little bit. And then come gently back over onto your side. So once again, you don't have to use the ball, you can just do your normal clam. But if you want to, it's quite an interesting addition. So I've got my feet resting on top of it for this. Effectively clam level two, but with a little bit of support. As always, watching the ribs aren't sinking and the pelvis is in that nice straight position. I'm going to float that top knee and I'm watching that my shoulder isn't tensing up too much. Keeping those tummy muscles drawn in. Let's just do one more. And then have a little rest, let the leg flop for a moment. And then perhaps the most challenging part of this is taking the ball between your feet without losing it. Hoping it behaves. Once you think you've got in position, as always, check there's that little elevation of the ribs. And then we'll start with the feet on the floor, lifting that top knee again. And then when you've done two or three, hover the feet, don't let the ribs sink, don't let the hip rock forwards or back. And off we go again. As I said, a lot more difficult challenging that top hip in terms of dynamic stability. What a really good exercise to do, we'll just do one more of those. And then see if we can stretch straight away into that lengthened position, just about enough room. Tummy in and then float that arm up, feel that lengthening in the whole body. And see if we can float the arm down and back without wobbling. Bring the fingertips to the floor. Breathe in on the out breath. Let's hover those feet, lifting the balls slightly, try not to let the ribs sink down. And lower back down again. Breathe in on the out breath, keep those fingertips lightly on the floor if possible. And lower down. If you feel you can manage it without wobbling too much, arm by your side as you lift again, really drawing in those tummy muscles. And lowering down. And then if you feel brave, arm over your head, lifting up. Well done if you're managing that. Lower down. And then let's roll that ball up. And just let that leg flop on the floor for a moment. You might want a quick ankle wiggle, sorry about the cracking again. And then if you want to reach around behind you, leave that leg hanging. And just have a gentle stretch. Coming over onto your side again. We're going to sit up and come into that hurdle position. So without the ball to start with. One leg in front, one leg behind. We're going to come down onto our elbow and just reach that top arm up and over and feel that nice stretch in the side of the spine. If you can't manage this, because of your hips or something, you can do it over the side of your chair. And as I said to you before, if you want to, now just reach the arm and twist your body slightly. Imagine someone's placed a drink for you, thank you very much. And then you're going to come back up. Okay, so that's, as I said before, the easier version. Remember what I said last time about the position with this, it's really important that you don't let the ball roll away too far. So sitting nice and tall first, we breathe in, as we breathe out, we're going to bend the elbow and just roll a little away. So hovering, but the weight is going through the elbow and the shoulder and then we come back up. So we're challenging ourselves, but we want to feel that we've got control, we're not just going to collapse into it. Strong in the shoulders, so this does work brilliantly obviously. Strong in the shoulders, so this does work brilliantly, obviously with side plank, I know I've done with you previously. If you want to, you can add in the arm and make that more dynamic and add in the element of stretch. But a really great one for what we call scapular stability. And you can do that as quickly as you want to really, okay? So let's do our hamstring stretch before we come onto our tummies. That leg goes out to the side with or without the ball, not at all essential, just a little bit of fun. So we're going to roll down towards the foot, feel that stretch in the hamstrings. It's a good one if you use the ball because it gives you that little bit more of a stretch into the side of your spine as well. Come back up out of that stretch, sit tall and then roll more towards the middle, feel that stretch in the inner thigh. Come back up. And then give those legs a shake. And we're going to come over to lie on our tummy. Okay, so before we go on, at this point, I always like to just bend my knees, give my ankles a wiggle. I think it helps reduce the likelihood of cramp in the feet. And then just a little sideways swish of the legs, the legs were like windscreen wipers, little loosen up for the hips and the back. Okay, and we'll just do our quadriceps stretch quickly before we move on. So bring that foot to the bottom, drawing it towards you. Feeling that stretch in the front of the thigh. Swapping legs. And then the other foot. And lowering down. So we're going to do swimming level one, a very familiar one to all of you, but I'm just going to show you, I really like using the ball for this one. As I said before, it doesn't have to be a ball, I like to imagine this is like a swimming float, so it's just really something to hold on to. Okay, so we're lengthening our body, it really encourages us to give that length right throughout the spine. Tightening the bottom, drawing in the tummy, lifting one leg, keeping our face in the water. Holding a few seconds and lowering, tightening and lifting the other leg. And lowering, we're trying not to rotate, but crucially, we're trying not to arch the back, that's the main thing with this one. Just alternating a few more times each side. And then we'll let go of the ball, rest our head on our hands for a moment and let our legs flop. Maybe another flank with the ball. Let's come up onto our forearms, stretch out the back gently. And then rest down, head on your hands, let everything flop again. Coming back up, arching the back. Resting down, head on the other side. And then coming back up. So if you're a beginner or you haven't done parties for a while, you might not want to do this next sequence. So do a few more repetitions of that gentle arch of the back. Or indeed go back and do some more swimming level one, okay? If you feel okay, we're going to go over front plank, we do modified plank, it is really. So from here, it's really important that we're thinking about strong shoulders. We want to make sure our chin is tucked in, so we don't want to start drooping towards the floor. Lift that chin, lengthen the back of the neck, widen those collarbones, think strong thoughts. We're going to breathe in and as we breathe out, we lift the hips. And it's really important that we're lengthening the spine, we don't want to feel like we're letting the spine arch and collapse or draw in that tummy. Tuck that tailbone under like we did in the bridge. Use those muscles around the ribs that we worked before. And whenever you feel you're starting to struggle, just come down and rest, head on the hands. And come back up again. So probably not a bad idea for us all to repeat that, just to really make sure we've got that technique and we feel comfortable with it. And we might find that actually that's as far as we want to go today. That's okay, so just check that you feel all right with that. And as I say, if you've had enough, just rest, or you might want to do some more gentle back extensions. For those of you that want to work a bit harder, coming back up again, a few ways we can adapt this. If you can tuck your toes under, so if you're a bit optimistic like me, that might be a struggle, but if possible, do so. Lift up into that front modified plank again and see if you can just straighten one knee and lower. Straighten the other knee and lower. And just alternate that a few times each side. You probably won't want to do too many because it is quite hard work, relax for a moment. And then let's just come up again. So that's one way of modifying it, or if you wanted to, and you're feeling like you want to work a bit more on stamina, you straighten one knee, then straighten the other knee. Really watch that that tummy is tucked in, the bottom isn't too high, okay? So the bottom needs to be quite low, keep that chin tucked in, keep that back of the neck long. And then obviously don't hold it too long, if you're starting to struggle and certainly if anything's starting to hurt, you know it's time to rest. So we'll come up onto our hands and knees now. And if it's okay for you, let's do that nice stretch where we sit back on our heels, knees wide, lengthen the body, keep the head low. Take a few nice relaxed breaths in that position. Let's stretch to one side. Come through the middle and stretch the other way. Come back to the centre. Slowly slide the hands in and come back into that kneeling position. So at this point, if you wanted to, you could roll up into standing, finish with a little bit of work in standing. But just before we finish today, I'm going to go through a few simple neck stretches. I tend to do this with my legs crossed, but if that's an issue for you, you can kneel. Have your legs out straight or even sit on a chair, it doesn't really matter. But we are thinking a little bit about our sitting posture. So we're going to start in a slumped position, we all do it, we know we shouldn't. And then we're going to think of trying to grow tall from the base of that spine. Imagine that snake being charmed, lengthen. Feel those collarbones broaden. Have to close your eyes at this point, lengthen that neck, have the arms softly on your knees, breathe in. And as we breathe out, we're going to let the ear drop to one side and just gently stretch out the other side of the neck. We're keeping our tummy in and keeping that length in the spine and nice and relaxed in the shoulders. Come back up to the middle, keep tall, breathe in on the out breath, let's take the head the other way. But let those shoulders stay down. So it's a little contradictory because we're lengthening from the bottom, but we're relaxing at the top. Release into that stretch and come back up. Let's have a little flop. Draw back up again. Nice and tall, this time we're going to turn our head as far as we can one way, but without twisting the shoulders. And then we're going to gently come back to the centre, keeping nice and tall. We're going to turn the other way. And come back to the middle again. Let's relax that back for a moment, grow tall. So all the while, we're trying to train our tummy muscles to do more of the work of sitting rather than the muscles at the back of our spine. Keeping tall, we're going to turn the head and then we're going to add a little extra twist. So one hand goes behind, the other hand comes onto the knee, keep that length in the spine and then twist the upper body so the shoulders go as well. Grow that stretch for a moment longer. Slowly return to the centre, keeping that nice length in the spine. Breathe in, let's turn the head the other way. Take the hand behind, other hand onto the knee and twist. Coming back to the centre, have a little flop. And grow tall again, keeping that length in the spine. This time we're going to do a quarter turn, we're going to drop the nose down, feel a different kind of stretch. Along the side of the neck and then slowly twist to look up at the ceiling. Come back up again, give the shoulders a little shrug, keep that length in the spine, turn the head the other way. Drop the nose down. Again, a slightly different stretch along the neck. And slowly rotate up. Coming back up again, little shrug of the shoulders. Let's relax again, slumping, growing tall again. And then this time, we're going to take the chin down to the chest. And if you want to, just apply a little bit of pressure with the fingertips on the back of the head. Release out of that stretch, have to keep your fingertips at the base of your skull and just let your head gently drop backwards. Come back up again, let's take our arms up forwards, clasp the hands, stretch those shoulders away like we did before and allow the top of the spine to curl round. And only if you feel comfortable too, you can come a little bit further down, but this depends on your flexibility in your hips. Slowly come back up again. Let's take the arms behind us, open our chest, use our hands to give us a little bit of a lift. We're not arching the neck too much, we're trying to open that upper back, arch a little, opening the chest. Coming back to the centre. Let's give our shoulders a shrug, flop for a moment. So we're finished there, thank you everybody, I hope that's helped a little and we'll maybe see you again.